March 7, 2023, meeting of the Smithfield Town Council to order. At this time, would you please rise? And Mr. Torrey, if you would, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Again, thank you for being here this evening. The first item on the agenda, Informational Section Managers' Report. Mr. Stallings?
Yes, sir. Included in your packet is the activity report for the previous month, as well as these summary reports from the committee meetings. Be glad to answer any questions if there are.
Any questions by members of the council for Mr. Stallings? And also let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Seeing no questions, the next item on the agenda is public comments. I have two folks signed up for public comments. The first is Teresa Mulhern. Ms. Mulhern? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, sir. And of course, I'll limit my comments to what I need for public comment and not for the hearing, because we'll be there later.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
First, a compliment. I had a front row seat to an incident that happened on Washington Street, which kept our police extremely busy for hours. They had every opportunity to not do it right, and they did it 100% correct. 100% correct. It could have gone wrong, it could have gone sideways, and they didn't do it. And so for everything that we see on public television, can we please give that gang a round of applause? Thank you. And then I'll just need, and it can be emailed to me, did Mr. Luters LLC pay for the property at the corner of Washington and James Street? Because I looked through the financials for it.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see them in the financials, so if they could just tell me which report it was in, that would be helpful.
That money is, just saying, that money is held in escrow. There's an agreement that the money would be used for downtown sidewalk improvements.
I remember that piece.
So it's been, it's been held in escrow.
Well, they can answer.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. And of course, it's a mess at that corner, but you all can drive by that and see. They were the two comments I wanted outside of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
206 Washington, I forgot to say.
Next person signed up, Mr. Bob Hines. Mr. Hines?
I'm just going to speak, but I prefer to wait until the full council is here. I was a little scratched with paper, by the way.
Well, this is the full council for tonight.
Well, I know that.
Okay, I just want, okay, make sure we're on the same sheet of music.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Good deal. All right. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Any members of council have any comments to be made?
I have one.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as sitting on the Stormwater Advisory Board for the county, as a representative from town of Smithfield, I feel like I need to let you know what's going on with some of those things that we'd have meetings for once a month. Everybody wants to know where the money goes for stormwater. We have developed a pilot program to help people that are having trouble with their stormwater in their neighborhood. Carrollton Acres has, or Carrollton Meadows, I guess it might be, they're in the pilot program, so it's the initiative to help them clean up their neighborhood with stormwater, the drainage systems, the outfalls, and so forth. So it's a, it's a program that's been needed for some time. Also, we are now addressing, for lack of a better word, your solar farms. The impact on groundwater, the water that's in the ponds, what's in the panels themselves. Testing will be done once a year on these sites, ground testing, groundwater testing. So we're really trying to get a hold of that, because we feel like the county has admitted they've been behind the ball, because they don't know what's really going on with these solar panels. It's a use of prime farmland that's, has really upset a lot of people. So we're working on that, too. So just to give you an update, a short update on that, I'll let you know that they are working together on that with, with the county, and we've had a lot of congressmen in the last year with that program. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Any members of council have a question of Mr. Smith?
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Butler?
I want to apologize to the citizens for being late. I've been under the weather over the last week, and I didn't think I was going to make it tonight, but I do want to apologize.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butler. Any other council comments? They're seeing none. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda item. The first is C1, Resolution to Approve Street Closure for St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 11. Mr. Jeff Brooks?
So we have an application for a street closure for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I believe we should get that done.
Okay, thank you. Next item is item C2. If I'm out of order, just let me know. Item C2, Motion to Approve the Purchase, New Server for SCADA. That's yours, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a dual system that's been operating on one server, and we've decided, or Jack has decided, to move these separate, so there won't be any redundancy, and also for safety measures, too, that if one system is down, the other one can sort of pick up what it needs to. So this is a budgeted item, and we recommend this for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next item is C3, Motion to Award Contract for Professional Audit Services. Mr. Pax not here, so Vice Mayor Butler, that would be you.
We'd like to make a motion to award the contract for professional audit services. We did it off the bid, and we are offering the services to the same CPA that we had on last year.
All right. Thank you. Next item is C4, Motion to Enter into a Lease with Rent-Fund LLC for Kayak Self-Service Kiosk, Parks Direct. That's yours as well, Ms. Butler?
I'd like to make a motion to enter into a lease with...
Let's, let's wait on the motion, just, if you, just a quick explanation, we'll do the motion in, in block if we can.
Okay. We are actually changing the process in which we are renting the kayaks over at Windsor Castle Park. We're going to be entering into a lease agreement, which is a self-service system with Fund Inc. It is better for the town, and the fact that it is more cost-effective, it will also allow us to extend our days for rentals, as well as possibly extending the season, especially if we have a warm season.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is C5, Invoices Over $20,000, requiring Council's Authorization. I would presume that's budget as well, if you will handle that for me. Vice Mayor Butler, I appreciate that.
We have two invoices over $20,000, one for Blair Brothers, Inc., which is for the gray street sidewalk repairs, for $40,002. The other one is for Lewis Construction of Virginia, Inc., which is the Red Point and Edgewood Drive Progress Building, $23,800.
Thank you. Any questions by members of council? If not, the chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the consent agenda items as presented.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Butler. Further discussion. Call for the question, please.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Mayor Bowman.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the action session. The first item is public hearing text amendment, shipping containers. Ms. Tammy Clary, Director of Community Development Planning, said this is a public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Town staff was tasked with updating the zoning ordinance for shipping containers right now. Article 2, Section P, Item 15, addresses our portable storage units. Item 16 addresses our construction debris containers. Staff is proposing the insertion of 17. Shipping containers are considered accessory structures for setback placement purposes and shall not be utilized as a primary building or dwelling. Shipping containers shall be permitted by right in the heavy industrial zoning district. This would be our I2. At no time shall shipping containers be stacked or used for habitation without the successful acquisition of a special use permit. Shipping containers are also permissible in the I1 light industrial, community conservation CC, and highway retail commercial zoning districts. This would be only after successfully acquiring a special use permit. It continues to limit them and not allow them located within any resource protection areas, and it also provides for an appeal process. This draft was presented to the Planning Commission at its Tuesday, January 10, 2023 meeting as a public hearing. Planning Commission did favorably recommend this to Town Council for review and decision at the Tuesday, February 14, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Town staff do recommend a robust discussion and agreement on finalized language. Just to clarify, in the zoning ordinance, this would add shipping containers as a by-right use in I2. It would add it as a special use permit item in I1, a special use permit item in the CC and the HRC zoning districts. We are also adding the definition of shipping containers to Article 13, along with the definition of portable storage containers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Any members of council have a question for Ms. Clary, or any clarification by our town attorney? Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. The first person, the only person I have signed up is Teresa Mulhern. Ms. Mulhern?
The forensic nurse is going to speak.
Ma'am?
Of course, your forensic nurse is going to speak. Shipping containers, you can make pools out of them, she sheds out of them, you can even build a beach house out of them. They're also used for torture chambers, moving drugs, and human trafficking. We are on the railroad to Richmond for human trafficking, so I'm asking that you table a vote until both our police department, perhaps the Commonwealth attorney, and I know that our former chief there, as mayor, really take a look to make sure we've got what we need in our ordinance to help prevent that. I cared for a trafficked victim. Her parents didn't know where she was for four years. It's awful. And so please protect those kids. Thank you.
Ms. Mulhern, to your point, I did ask Deputy Chief Meyer to look in at, Deputy Chief, if you come to the podium, please. State your name for the record, please.
Chris Meyer, Deputy Chief of Police. So we looked at not only our ordinances, but the ones in localities nearby, and no locality puts that in their codes to address human trafficking, because the Code of Virginia expressly prohibits human trafficking in 182355. So to put it again would, it'd be redundant. It's already covered.
Any questions of Deputy Chief Meyer by members of council? Mr. Riddick, do you have any follow-up?
No, it's, but his point is well taken. The, this is a zoning ordinance amendment. This allows the Planning Commission and the Town Council to have specific hands-on supervision and review with the, with respect to the use of shipping containers in every district where they're permitted, except in the heavy industrial district. Well, we happen to have a very large meat packer in town where shipping containers come in every day.
Yes, sir.
And so that's, that needs to be a by-right use, but we think, we've done a, the Planning Commission did an exhaustive analysis of this and spent quite a lot of time about it, and we think we've come up with mechanisms within these ordinances that protects the public interest, and the staff recommends that it be approved, as did the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Riddick or Deputy Chief Meyer by members of council? Thank you, sir. Ms. Mulhern's the only one I had sign up. Anyone else wish to be heard on the shipping container? Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I've prepared an ordinance.
Yes.
It's a cover ordinance, and it adopts all of the provisions that were discussed by the Planning Commission and have been advertised, and all of those that have been outlined by your planning director.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see that we accept the motion to amend the...
Approve the ordinance.
Yeah, approve the ordinance as presented and discussed by planning.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brooks. Further discussion on the matter? Call the question, please, Ms. King.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
And just before, just with a, just a clarification, we, this was, as Ms. Clary terms it, a robust discussion. We have, I think, had a significant robust discussion, and I know the Planning Commission has too. So with that, the chair will vote aye. Thank you. The next item is item 2, Public Hearing Text Amendment, Portable Storage Containers. Tammy Clary, Director of Community Development Planning. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you, members of council. This is addressing Section 15, Section P15 of Article 2. This is for the portable storage units. The text amendment is allowing them permissible on property for 21 days. After that 21-day period, they would be permissible for a maximum of 45 days with a zoning permit, with a zoning permit waiver, at which point a zoning permit would then be required, and that would provide them with an additional 90 days of use. At the Tuesday, February 14, Planning Commission, this was favorably recommended to Town Council. Town staff do recommend a robust discussion and agreement on finalized language. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Any questions by members of the council? Ms. Clary, or clarification by the town attorney on this ordinance? This ordinance. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing on this matter. Does anyone in the public wish to be heard on this matter? Mr. Riddick?
Again, Mr., you need to close your, the public hearing, but...
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
The, once again, I prepared an ordinance that adopts the language that's been approved and recommended by the Planning Commission and the appropriate action. If you're, if you see fit, is to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance as written.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. The next item is item 3, Public Hearing Text Amendment, Conditional Zoning and Proffers. Tammy Clary? Ms. Clary? Seems it's your night tonight.
Yes, thank you, sir. Just for clarification, town staff did provide an updated staff report. This was a result of our discussions at the committee meetings regarding a potential change to this language. Right now, Section I5 of Article 5 reads, "No amendment shall be made to any accepted proffer except in the manner of a new rezoning application as set forth herein. This is contradictory to Virginia Code, which does allow amendments to the proffer conditions where such amendment does not affect conditions of use or density, a local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing." Town staff have now proposed the following addition for Section 5. "There should be no amendment or variation of any conditions proffered pursuant to Article 5 until after a public hearing before the governing body. However, where an amendment to such proffered conditions is requested and where such amendment does not affect condition of use or density, a local governing body may waive the requirement for a public hearing and a new rezoning application by a majority vote at the next regularly scheduled Town Council meeting." Again, the first part of this sentence was suggested by the town attorney during committee meetings. The last part of the sentence was an addition by the Planning Commission at the Tuesday, February 14 Planning Commission meeting. Town staff do recommend a robust discussion and agreement on finalized language. We also recommend that this item return to Planning Commission for review and recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just as a clarification, I think on 5, you said there should be, and maybe I misunderstood, but I think, just for clarification, item 5, there shall be, no...
Correct, yes, sir.
I may have misunderstood, but I want to make sure that we're, we're clear as far as notes.
It shall.
It shall. No, just from the public perspective, but anyway. Any questions by members of council for Ms. Clary, or clarification at this point from Mr. Riddick? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Being none, this is a public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for the matter. Does anyone in the public wish to be heard on this matter at this time?
She signed up.
I'm sorry?
She signed up. She...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. Ms. Mulhern, I'm sorry.
Um, Mulhern.
State your, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Teresa Mulhern, 206 Washington Street in our illustrious town. I think you have enough protections in the existing Virginia Code, and I hesitate that you can't keep rubber stamping the Planning Commission. This is tax money when you're talking proffers, and we have the right to hear anything and everything that's changing. I'm not sure why this proposal came now. I'm not. I'd love to know why. Is it to suit a certain owner's needs? I don't know.
We want to clarify that?
Um, Mr. Luters LLC...
Because I can assure you this, as mayor, I don't rubber stamp nor clarify or do anything for any specific owner's needs.
That's why I asked you not to.
I promise not to.
Yes, yes. And so, anyway, I disagree. I don't think we need a change. Bring it back before the public, nothing about us, without us. Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Just, just, yes, Ms. Mulhern?
Ms. Mulh...
Vice Mayor?
Mulhern?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, I, I concur with what Mayor Bowman has said, that the reason that this came up was in reference to Mallory Scott subdivision. I mean, there was a robust conversation around it, because I had some confusion in trying to understand it. And based on the public hearing that was approved for that subdivision, when the paperwork was filed, there was an error in the paperwork. So that was why this amendment came about, to make that correction easier. But under no circumstances are we changing the procedure, you know, dealing with ordinances where proffers are concerned.
Well, I think that other things can slip through on that, and so I disagree with the changes. Nothing about us, without us.
For the comment. Thank you, Ms. Mulhern. Any further, any other member of the public wish to be heard? Yes, sir. Mr. Gay, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Gay, 110 Goose Hill Way, and I just want to provide support to Ms. Mulhern's concerns in a way, and I heard the robust discussion at the committee meetings last week. Ms. Butler, you did ask the right questions about why is this so, sounds so complex. There's a piece of me that accepts at face value what we've been told. There's another, the old Colonel image of males in ambush from the Rangers Battalion days, long, long past, that says something's not quite right here. How the Mallory's farm approval sent that operation supposedly into detailed subdivision ordinance review for the past year, where the developer was required to submit an initial plat of his development. And one would have thought that in a year of discussions and meetings and review process, that something as obvious as the development there, the, the marina at the creek, would have surfaced, and would have been caught, picked up, it's a no-brainer, fix it. So just, something in me says, this may be a red herring to something that has more impact on the community going down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Mr. Riddick. What we're doing basically, mir, I'm sorry, anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Thank you. They're hearing none? I have just a question for you. The, as I understood from the robust discussion that we've had, this does nothing more than mirror and causes us to come into compliance with state statutes. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Don't have any further comment. Any question? Any follow-up?
Mr., Mr...
Yeah, Mr., Mr...
There's quite been, y'all have had quite a lot of discussion, perhaps the rest of the public hasn't, but the way this, there is no conspiracy here. The, we were, the developer of Mallory Scott discovered that his paperwork, the proffers that he signed and submitted to the town and were recorded in the clerk's office, contained a provision for a fishing pier. If you recall, the Planning Commission approved, recommended approval of that development without a fishing pier. It was a, it was a big issue with the public, and everybody agreed that that should go away. Fishing on kayak, I'm not sure what it was, but it was a big pier. The developer agreed that there should not be one. The, there was a, quite a lot of discussion at the Town Council level. Once again, it was clearly understood that there was to be no pier. However, they submitted their paperwork with a pier, and we, collectively staff, missed it. We made a mistake, okay? That's, that happens. Ms. Clary was dealing with the developer about this, and he, the engineer said, where are you going to put the pier? And the developer said, well, we don't have to build a pier, and then he pointed to the paperwork, and clearly that was required. So in order to fix the proffers, we looked at the town code and discovered that it would require a new rezoning application. Well, that's not consistent with state law.
Understood.
And so, once we discovered that, we came, we looked at the code, and we suggested to the Planning Commission that the town code needed to be amended to mirror state code, which we required by law to do. And that's what, that's what's come about here. The, there, there's been additional discussion, however, because the planning, the language that the Planning Commission recommended really doesn't correct the problem, because it's still stated that there, it mentions a new rezoning application, and that's not what's necessary at all. So what we're saying at the, recommending to the council is that there should be, there should be a public hearing on all matters pertaining to the revision of a proffer, except in the narrow circumstances that are outlined by the Virginia State Code, which says that the local government, governing body may, did not have to, may waive the requirement for a public hearing and a, and a new rezoning application.
Mm-hmm.
That's what...
I get it.
That mirrors, mirrors the state code. And so we're suggesting we adopt the new language, but since this is not an urgent matter, and since Mr. Pax had opined that he wanted to be, to weigh in on this, and is not here tonight, we recommend that this be sent back. No action taken by the council tonight, and it be remanded to the Planning Commission so that they can see the new proposed language, and they can consider it their meeting next week.
What's the pleasure, the council?
Yeah, I'd like to see it moved back to planning.
To remain back to council?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yep, second.
Second by Mr. Brooks. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, call the question.
Vice Mayor Bowman?
I'm reverting back to commission days. Go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Motion to Approve the Minutes of the February 7 meeting. Mr. Riddick?
With members of council, I reviewed the minutes. I have one minor change. I would recommend that they be, it's just the word approve instead of accept, and I recommend that be, that the minutes be approved as revised.
Any questions of Mr. Riddick? Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes presented by Mr. Riddick.
Motion approved.
As revised.
As revised.
As revised.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brooks. Further discussion? Call the question, please, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Uh.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. Next item is new business. Mr. Riddick?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the subdivision plat for Luther Acres has been received by Ms. Clary's office, and then it has been reviewed and found to be in proper form. The next step with respect to that subdivision is for the developer to enter into a subdivision agreement. I've submitted to, circulated to all of you, this is the standard subdivision agreement that the town has been using for well over 20 years now. It applies to Luther Acres, which is eight lots, and it applies to Cypress Creek, which It provides for a bond by the developer. It sets forth the obligations for the developer to meet all of our required standards and, and ordinances, and it specifies the tap fees they're supposed to pay and, as well as all of the other conditions that are required under the town's zoning and subdivision ordinances. We find this, this agreement is in proper form and Ms. Clary and I recommend to the Town Council that they authorize the town manager to execute this on behalf of the town. One condition of the rezoning was that there had to be a deed of easement for the preservation of those specimen trees along James Street. I've prepared that as well. It was been sent to the developer and that is a condition. Receipt of the executed easement is also a condition of Ms. Clary signing off on that plaque. So, both of those are supposed to be received by the town by the first of next week, and we would recommend that you authorize the kind of town manager to execute the agreement.
Any questions by members of council of Mr. Riddick? Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir. Mr. Riddick, it, it would seem to me, since this development's already in progress and it's already been approved, that this document should have been done prior to. Is that not normal operating, okay, procedure?
This is, we, these are done at the same time that we're, at the same time that we're prepared to execute the plaque. The, the plaque is the document that goes to record that allows the developer to proceed with his subdivision. He actually doesn't have to put that plaque to record, but he, he can't do that until he signs this agreement right here. And so, until he signs the agreement, in fact, he may not record that plaque for months because there's really not a need to do that, but he can't do anything until he executes this agreement. And he puts up the bond, and we've already received the bond, have we not, Ms. Clary? $520,000 or thereabouts.
Further questions? I just have one. Looking at the back page, the bottom line on this, if I understand correctly, is that this could have been executed by Mr. Stallings without the matter being...
We, but it's, we, it could be, but we, it's been, it's been the custom and practice that we bring this to your attention to let you know what's going on.
And the amounts that are contained therein are consistent?
The, the, the amount of the proffers are adopted by the town code.
Right.
$1,580.
Right.
I mean, there's, they're all specified. All this is consistent with the provisions of the town ordinances. And the bond is established by Ms. Clary after she sends the, she has to send it through a reviewing agency to determine if the numbers provided by the developer are realistic and accurate.
I've got a question.
Yeah, Ms., Vice Mayor Butler?
You said that the town manager could have already executed the subdivision agreement?
Well, we've never done that before, Ms. We don't do that.
I'm asking a question.
Okay.
But you say we're also looking for two documents to be returned to us from the developer, correct?
This one, this one signed, this document.
Is this the only document?
And the deed of easement.
Okay.
And both of them, I've, I've sent both of them to the developer and they're to be, he's, has to execute them before no republic and return them to us.
So, do we want to execute this before we get the deed of easement back?
Well, he won't.
All you're doing is voting to authorize me to sign it upon receipt of those documents back.
Okay.
So, I will not sign them until we have those documents in hand.
Okay.
Further questions? Well, just being new to me, and I wanted to make sure we check all the boxes. Do we take mo, do we have to take any action to approve this?
The appropriate action would be a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the subdivision agreement for Luter Acres.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion made by Mr. Smith is our second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Butler. Further discussion?